Sherry, are you there?
Ms. Womack, can you hear us?
She is dialing in by phone.
I'll send her the number, Rebecca too. Did you send it to her as well?
I did.
It is 6:00 PM, but I'm going to give Ms. Womack just a couple of minutes to sign in. We'll just sit tight until we're able to hear from her, okay? Ms. Womack, when you get in, if you just say something, let us know you're in here, okay? Ms. Womack, are you there yet? Thank you everyone for your patience. We're just trying to work through some technical difficulties. As soon as we can get all our board members online, we'll move forward. Just be patient with us. Thank you. Ms. Womack, are you there yet?
Mr. Kelly, she just joined by phone.
Ms. Womack, can you hear us? Ms. Womack, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, the warning says there's too many people on the meeting and it keeps shutting it off and I have to starstick to get back on again.
We're all here now. Everybody will mute. At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education, ready for board meetings to order Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, for 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to offer a muller of silence. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the pledge allegiance and in a few seconds, an American flag will pop up on your screen. We're all standing. And say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Moving right along, we will move into our public comments. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Andy Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we outlined in our procedures from last week, members of the public should share public comments with us and we said that we would read those, so I will read public comments that we have from the community. The first one is from Flora Otero from 3009 Cornstone Tribe. Question is, how will they students be graded? Second comment is from Candace Cochran from 163 Woodwedge Way. Comment is 5G rolling out in Lee County for those that live in rural areas. What efforts are being made for rural areas to gain fast and reliable internet for students? Thank you. Third comment is from Claudia Morales, 5124 Laurel Ridge Drive. Comments inquiring about senior graduation. My sister is coming from Texas for her son's graduation as well. The fourth comment is from Chrissy Miller, 12 Bassett Hall Lane, Sanford, North Carolina. The comment, I want to commend Lee County schools for their response to the COVID-19 pandemic. When we were all suddenly thrust into the unknown, Lee County schools leaped into action. The school system worked diligently to make sure kids have food and access to resources. Schools are reading out, reaching out in creative ways to show their students their love and mist. Online learning and content hasn't been overwhelming during this traumatic time. And most importantly, Lee County schools has worked really hard to make sure what they are doing is as equitable as possible. On behalf of my two Southern Lee students in our community, I thank you. We are all in this together and together we will get through this. From Lacretia Reeves, 2117 Jasney Drive. The comment, will the curriculum for next year be adjusted to include teaching from the last quarter of the previous grade's curriculum? And then the final comment from Alicia Courtney, 4469 NC 87 South. Comment, will children's grades this year count towards their GPA? And if not, why? And what kind of impact, negative and positive, do you see it having on the kids? Why not have kids that have done the hard work throughout the year and kept their grades up, allow their grades to build towards an overall GPA? And those who didn't put in the extra work for the upcoming years. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report from public comments. And we'll be addressing some of these comments and some things that I'll say tonight. And also, we'll be reaching out to the questions that were created in public comments to help answer that for the citizens who have placed their comments before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, we appreciate our public comments and the input of our public citizens. Moving along to our Lee County Schools vision statement, turning it over to Mr. Pat McCracken.
Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you, sir. Moving along to our code of ethics for school board members, to Vice Chair Christine Hilliard.
The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to speak a motion to approve the agenda for our meeting today, 4/14/2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented for April 14th, 2020.
I have a motion from Dr. Smith. Do I have a second from Vice Chair Christine Hilliard?
Second please from Christine.
All in favor of our agenda, please signify by saying aye, but also raise your hand at the same time. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Our agenda is approved. Thank you. Moving along to our approval of our minutes for a regular board meeting on March 17th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor of the minutes from 317 26, then would say an aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving along, I want to move along to our chairman's report and I'd like to say, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our employees for everything they've done since schools closed on March 16th to keep learning going. From our teachers, to our child nutrition staff, to our custodians, and everyone in between, in a few short weeks, you have totally transformed our school system. Your efforts are keeping our children engaged and learning. By taking part in online classes and activities you provide, our students are mastering what they have been taught and moving on to new material. It is vital that we do everything we possibly can to minimize the loss of learning this school year and prepare our students to move to the next grade as prepared as possible. What you are doing every day is incredibly important. Your efforts are ensuring that our children are being fed and are being supported. Whether it's prepping or serving one of the 42,448 meals we have provided to our families since March 20th, or checking in on the children who need a little extra support, you're helping shore up the foundation that school provides for so many of our students. And the list of accomplishments that our staff has and does goes on and on and on. I wish time would allow me to list every single one of them. On behalf of Board of Education, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Your selfless and your love for children has been evident in every day in the classroom over the years. And now is evident more than ever to parents and families and to the community. Stay strong, stay balanced, stay well, and keep up the heroic work. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Andy Brown, who has further details on our COVID-19 response.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to look at three different areas tonight, some of which has been covered in school community letters that I've sent out over the last couple of weeks. I'd like to just give an update on where we are for COVID-19 response at the school district. First area is nutrition and student support. As the chairman noted, we have provided 42,448 meals since March 20th for our community. And we've done that at eight school sites and seven community sites for a total of 15 where we're distributing food. In partnership with MerTech Solutions, our National Academy Foundation of New Year instructors at Lee County High School, who's Quinn Henry. And Southern Lee High School is Martin Bryan. If you used our 3D printers to make facials, our nutrition staff to support them. Our maintenance staff have built Plexiglas stands as an additional protective measure for our nutrition staff serving meals to the public. And in regards to student support, our staff, including our guidance counselors, social workers, and teachers, and classified staff have been part of work contacting students to check on their wellbeing and academic needs. We've nearly completed our first round of check-ins with all of our students to discuss graduate, well, particularly our seniors to discuss graduation requirements and course completion, and also checking with our underclassmen to make sure that they're doing the things they need to do and to check on their wellbeing. From a curriculum and instruction perspective, we have provided laptops for students who need one and instructional packets for students, particularly in the grade areas of pre-K 2. We've created a curriculum boosters website, which is live, which can be found on the district's website. This website contains resources for pre-K through 12th grade and is intended to supplement assignments provided by individual teachers. We've also published grading guides for seniors and students in K-11. We have posted a virtual master schedule classes on each school's website. We know parents and teachers are trying to juggle a lot of responsibilities right now with, between work and being home and trying to take care of childcare. So we know sometimes people have to deal with several issues at one time, so we'll make sure you know when classes are. We've also created a virtual learning guide for students that's available in English and Spanish and what we're trying to accomplish for our students. We've also completed the extension of filtered internet access in each one of our school parking lots for student laptop use. And created a Lee County Technology Support Line for laptop support that's operational. The number for that is 919-897-5403 and support that's available for school issued laptops. During this time, we've been supporting our professionals in our district, our classified and certified staff. Thirty-eight district-wide professional development sessions online and 45 school-specific professional development opportunities. During that time in those school sessions, there have been 7,538 online sign-ins for those professional development opportunities. Our educators, as I noted before, have continued to make phone calls to students and parents to check about laptop and internet access and also family wellbeing. We've tried to reach out to every student and with our guidance counselors, social workers, and other staff members. There are some questions that are still a little up in the air as we move forward. Connectivity and laptop access. We continue to call students and check for laptop access and internet connectivity. We are scheduling individual times for laptop pickup or delivery with students and parents. We're also working with individual students regarding solutions to their internet accessibility. We've had conversations with various internet providers as well around the county about their coverage maps and access for different parts of the county. There have been several questions about graduation. We are just currently discussing several potential options for graduation. If we do not reopen, however, we will not issue a final decision until the governor makes a decision about reopening schools after May 15th. Also, there have been some questions about curriculum for next year. Next year's curriculum obviously will have to be addressed in some part next year to address any learning gaps that students have from the loss of school time during the closure. As a final statement and reiterate what Chairman Kelly, I think, has already said, we just like to thank everyone for their patience and understanding over the last month as we've tried to redesign our school district, going from instruction in the classroom to instruction in the living room practically. We are so proud of our students and our families, our educators, our support staff, their dedication and hard work in helping make sure learning continued. Our children will fail and our basic operations continue. We know we still have a lot of work to do and questions to continue to answer. However, we are committed to continuous improvement and sustain our efforts until we find ourselves back in our school buildings and on a normal schedule. Opened up for any questions or comments from board members.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think Dr. Brown and the entire Lee County school staff is to be commended for all they've done for the past three or four weeks during this unprecedented coronavirus occasion. And they certainly have everybody's thanks and appreciation for what they've done for our students and our community.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I've had the opportunity to see it firsthand, from food hubs to all the hard decisions that have been made in this very room here. And they appreciate our support and everything as well. Any other comments?
I want to echo Go ahead Christine. I want to echo I want to echo what Dr. Smith said and commend Dr. Brown and the entire staff for everything they've done and all the dissemination of all the information that's gone out as quickly as possible. That information may have had to change once it went out and you addressed that very quickly. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Womack?
Yes, Patrick. I would like to say that I was really impressed with BP Bullock and the way they handled it when the tree went in the house. And I'd also like to think that when this is over, we could possibly sit down, regroup, and do something like an after-action report on lessons learned and what we can do in the future in case this is expected to happen again. I have no other comments.
Thank you. Board Member McCracken? Pat, you need it.
Sorry about that. I just want to just add to what Dr. Smith said and commend Dr. Brown and all the senior staff and everyone that has been involved with this. Obviously, we can't mention them all, but just unbelievable what they've done. Would like to share a story that a parent told me I had to share tonight and it just kind of to me sums up everything. This family has children in elementary, middle, and high school. And I think her exact words were that she was completely satisfied in all levels with how things were being handled. So thank you very much. I know we still got a long ways to go, but if we can continue to do this the rest of the way, we're going to be in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Sutton, Ms. Sutton? Ms. Sutton, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're speaking or not. I don't have a V here for you either at this point. Board Member Cobble?
Hey, Patrick, can you hear me?
I can. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just wanted to give you a heads up. I was going to send you a screenshot across my screen in my phone. It continues to say there's too many in the meeting and it's muting people automatically. But I sent that screenshot to Rebecca as well. We might can fix that in future.
Thank you.
No problem.
At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman,
Patrick, can you share, Ms. Womack, make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
I have a motion, Ms. Womack. A second for Dr. Smith. All in favor, simply saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Our consent agenda is approved. Moving into new business, we have changes to the traditional year-round and early college calendars. I will read the motion and then open for discussion. As a school community, over the past few weeks, we have redesigned our school system, going from learning in the classroom to learning in the living room. As a result, our students, families, and educators are working hard to continue meaningful and appropriate learning during the COVID-19 crisis. In an effort to give our students and staff a much-needed break and allow everyone time to rest and recharge, we're proposing the traditional year-round and early college calendars be amended to make Friday, May 1st, an optional workday for teachers with no online instruction for students. This workday follows three weeks after spring break and three weeks before Memorial Day. At this point, open the floor for any discussion. I will turn it over to Dr. Paul.
Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Look, I just had a quick question. During the development of this calendar process, did we have teachers? Each organization that was a part of that process?
Yes, ma'am. We have a calendar committee put together. Now, this motion being presented here is coming from senior staff who come out here and price the connection they offer. Would be well needed at this point because of the threat.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just for everybody's benefit, this is just one day, just one, a change of one day for May 1st. They'll give teachers a sort of a transition. It'd be a three-week transition from now until May 1st, and then from May 1st as an optional workday, that Monday to Memorial Day. So we're not sure what the governor's going to decide, but we thought we could split up, split up the calendar for teachers.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the amended traditional year-round calendars and Lee early calendars to change Friday, May 1st, 2020 to an optional teacher workday.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, simply saying aye. And what I'll do, I'll do a roll call, okay? Christine Hilliard?
Aye.
Pat McCracken?
Aye.
Lynn Smith?
Aye.
Stephen Cobble? Stephen Cobble? Ms. Sutton? Ms. Sutton? Ms. Womack?
Aye.
Mr. Cobble? Can you hear us? Ms. Sutton, can you hear us? Pat, can you hear us? Is there, are you good with this motion? Thank you. Thank you. We can't hear you. You're muted. You need to unmute yourself. Do I have an aye from you? Yes?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cobble? You're muted. I can't hear you. Please unmute. Do I have an aye?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Do I have an aye from you?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Pass you damn asleep. Thank you for all your hard work to our teachers and I'm sure you're looking forward to this day. Thank you all. Moving along to our rescheduled Lee County Board of Education budget work sessions. We're proposing to move the dates to May 4th and May 6th. May 4th will be just the work session, May 6th be the public hearing and the work session. And due to the governor's orders, we will do those virtually. I will now open the floor for discussion. Are you there, Dr. Cobble? Do you have any discussion?
No discussion. Are you, hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion from other board members? Ms. Sutton, any discussion? Good?
I'm good.
Ms. Womack, are you good with those dates?
Yes, sir.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Smith? Dr. Smith?
Yes, I'm in.
Have I covered? Christine, I'm sorry. Are you good with those dates?
Yes.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion from one of you for this, for the change of dates.
I make a motion to approve the change of dates of the budget work session as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor, I'll do a roll call. First, Vice Chair Hilliard.
Yes.
Dr. Cobble.
Yes.
Lynn Smith.
Yes.
Pat Sutton.
Yes.
Pat McCracken.
Yes.
Jerry Womack.
Yes, sir.
Motion stands approved. Thank you. Moving along to our closed session, I will entertain a motion for our closed session. Before we do, what we need to do is we'll click over to, or click out of this one into our closed session minute, into our closed session link. We'll then come back to open session to approve the personnel. Any questions before we do so? All right. At this time, I entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section 143-318.1181.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closed session, simply saying aye.
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 Thank y'all. See you over just a second in the next one. Thank y'all. See you over just a second in the next one. Yes, ma'am, just waiting on a couple others, okay?
Okay. Uh, the only reason I ask is I'm having to recall in and back and forth with different codes each time. Maybe that'd be a better way to do it.
No problem. It's okay.
All right, no problem.
We're just waiting on Dr. Cobble.
Can you hear me, Patrick?
Yes, sir. Can you hear and see you?
Good. That may be unfortunate.
We are all back. At this time, I would declare us back in open session. At this time, continuing our new business, do I hear a motion from anyone concerning any of our personnel reports?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the one-year, two-year, and four-year contracts as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. At this time, I'll do a roll call vote, starting with you, Dr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. McCracken.
Aye.
Ms. Womack.
Aye.
Ms. Sutton. Ms. Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Cobble, Dr. Cobble. You're muted, sir. Raise your hand if you, if you're an "aye". Dr. Cobble, can you hear us now? Ms. Hilliard.
Aye.
Do you support the, uh, the, the, uh, motion by McCracken about the, uh, administrative contracts?
Aye. There we go, we have unanimous consent, all board members voting "aye". Thank you. Moving along to our next personnel motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, starting with Chris- uh, Vice Chair Christine Hilliard.
Aye.
Dr. Cobble.
Aye.
Sam Sutton.
Aye.
Lynn Smith.
Aye.
Pat McCracken.
Aye.
Jerry Womack.
Aye.
Thank you all, once again, unanimous decision. Thank you. Moving along, I would just like to say that I know this is new and different, and I'm grateful to be on the board with each and every one of you that we can move through this trying time that is testing not only us but our teachers a lot more. And I'm again grateful for our staff and our students and our faculty for the hard work they're putting in. At this time, do I have the most important motion of all? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, seeing what I'm saying, "aye", and clicking the X to close out.
Aye.
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 Be safe.
Thank you.
Hey, Patrick, is Dr. Bryant still there?
He is, but I'll need to close out the meeting because we adjourned.
Okay.
I'll give you a call, Sharon.